Somehow, the stone mawling and impetuous we're getting from the leadership has to be overwhelmed and suppressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just one clarification. In addition to the ordinance is also a recommendation for planning. So I just want to make that clear because we have to make these changes in both documents. So we have an ordinance change and we have the change to the plan for a citywide system of neighborhood councils.
Please give us a card now. We have it in the file. So on this item, we're moving forward on the ordinance, supporting the approval of the ordinance, also the approval of the plan, and then we're taking a hand with this. And we also need to support at the department authority of the project authority, we support that it should be approved and funded. And also, I'd like to make sure there are notes that we clarify that the ordinance would supersede the bylaws of the interim neighborhood council. We leave that for those who are questions. Next item.
Item number three is the Dunn Report relates to the creation of funding caps for the LA Congress and Neighborhoods and for the Neighborhood Council but not.
Excuse me, Senator Manick, the Department of Neighborhood Power. In 2013, City Council created a budgets/ budget advocacy/ Congress account. This allowed Neighborhood Councils to support through Congress Neighborhoods each year as well as the Neighborhood Council budget advocates. There were restriction on this account, one of them, the major restriction being $100,000 at the time that was created. We had anticipated this to occur fiscal year. Restriction, however, it turns out it is there for the lifetime. So at this point, the account is maxed in terms of getting that $100,000 cap. And we are therefore requesting for two accounts to be made to separate the Congress Neighborhoods and the budget advocate accounts instead of having those capped at $100,000 each. And we'll be doing this each fiscal year. Of course, they want to do the controller instructions in terms of making sure that we can track the money accurately. And I feel that this allows Neighborhood Councils to continue to support these very two important works that they do each year. Have you taken any questions at this point?
I don't understand why, what was the rationale for the cap in the first place?
I believe the cap was put in the first place as perhaps a budget stopgap in case Neighborhood Councils weren't able to spend their funds, just dump the funds into this account instead.
They can't retrieve it, right?
Say that again.
If they gave the money for these specific purposes, they couldn't later come back and retrieve it.
That's right. They couldn't, they couldn't do that. But I think that there was a concern that that might happen, so.
And I hope that the only source of both of these accounts is funding to the Neighborhood Councils to do for these two activities.
That's correct.
And specifically, if they were to be able to take that, if they were going to be for Dunn to be able to form and assist them to accomplish this task, why would they cap it? Because it rolls over. It's not.
Right, because this is never swept. Right. It's a special council, it's never swept. And so I believe in the time that there was request to put a cap on for that reason.
So now you're saying they would make it into two separate accounts and cap each $100,000. What does that aid us to do?
So it allows us to separate the accounts to track them more accurately at this point because of that initial cap and the fact that they shared the accounts. The budget advocates ended up not getting as much funding because of that cap. So Congress didn't receive more funding, so we felt that in the end it would be cleaner to track it and allow both of them to raise the necessary funds as they saw fit. And so every year, controllers asked us to ask for a creation of these accounts so that each year would, each account would only track for one fiscal year.
But if that account, if Neighborhood Councils contribute, is it earmarked specifically for the presidential or is it just going to?
They specifically stated to us, we have voted to contribute this amount to Congress or to the budget advocacy.
So then if the goal says we've had it in the past, then would there still be that disparity in the amount of money that goes to the government because of the designation?
Right, so it wouldn't be disparity because now they would have their own separate accounts with their own separate caps.
I know, but if the Neighborhood Councils don't contribute to this free loan as they do to Congress, that's not necessarily a contribution to that.
That's correct, but in the last round of fundraising for them, that was an issue because of the limit of the existing account.
Let me ask you just maybe a title. It shows that 2013-14 contributions exceeded $33,258. And then it shows later that after the receipts in the player, we funded $31,400. Those two dollars.
I'm sorry, are we reading on that first paragraph?
Second paragraph, where they talk about.
The excess amount.
The contribution exceeded.
Some Neighborhood Councils actually contributed and didn't have the money to contribute. After everything was said and done, yes, they had run out of funds.
So it was floating in the chain.
Yes.
Well, I had, yeah, you just answered that question. So was the excess, was the excess amount strength towards other expenses or activities?
So anything that was above the $100,000 cap was returned back to the Neighborhood Council.
Or is it?
Yes.
So that's what you do every time you see funds that you receive, you just go back to.
Right, this is the first time that this has happened because we didn't realize that that, we thought that as soon as they spent it down, there would be more room to add more funds, but it turned out to be a $3,000 lifetime cap.
But what are the costs to the Congress of Neighborhoods and Neighborhood Councils?
So last fiscal year for Congress, you see on that second line, is $28,255.20. And the budget advocates is $8,733.14. And that goes towards the location, materials, food. It's a pretty massive event for them to set up. And so they are now, because of the success, they regularly get over 700 people attending Congress. They are looking at making it into possibly multi-days, expanding it into City Hall East which is currently only at City Hall. So they do want the ability to raise more funds to cover that expense.
So how much more are you expecting the events to be combined to?
You know, I don't have an exact figure for that because it depends on what the Congress Planning Committee decides to do. If it goes into multi-days, it could easily double the current expenditures. And with budget advocates, you know, they are looking, they're looking to Mayor's Office and looking to do outreach for the budget process. And I know $100,000 sounds like a lot, but we look at it in light of citywide outreach for the budget process, it's not really that much at all. And I know that they are starting to do more innovative things in terms of having a video show to talk about the city budgets, and they're starting this in the next few months. So there is definitely an ability to increase their costs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, this is a different way to reach your capacity, both in terms of the budget and in terms of the Neighborhoods, specifically more outreach citywide, this goes to your capability. My question is, what's the existing process for contributions? Does a Neighborhood Council just take it upon themselves to donate $1,000 or $2,000? So for example, if they're nice, it's in the council, they all decide to donate $2,000, that gives you approximately $200,000, you know, which is fine, and it gets there. That's a voluntary action, primitive by the Neighborhood Councils. How is, or do the same Neighborhood Councils tend to donate to fund, to save funds?
So, yes, the same Neighborhood Councils tend to donate, you know, my apologies, I don't have a list of that, I should. They do, it is a voluntary act. The Department receives funding in the amount of $10,000 for Congress and $10,000 for budget advocates to assist in their activities as well. So this is in addition to that. And the Neighborhood Councils take a board vote, the Congress and the budget advocates actually go to the Neighborhood Councils and tell them about what they're doing and how it's helpful to them and how, you know, that they can support growing the system. And at that point, they make a determination whether or not they want to support.
And these funds, can they also take donations from individuals or businesses or stakeholders who just want to help?
Currently, the donation, you know, any outside donation can only be accepted through City Council. And I don't know in terms of this fund whether or not we could take funding outside. It's currently written to only take funding from the Neighborhood Councils themselves, but I don't see why we couldn't do.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm just being very honest with you, I'm just very honest with you. It would be, okay, yeah, that's, that's a good question. Thank you.
So your assessment is that when you're going to do accounts, $100,000 each, that is, is the expenses?
I believe so.
Is it going to be that we're not coming back in three months and that it should be three, four years?
Well, I think because I have to come back every year to ask for new two new accounts to be opened, that next year, if it turns out that we have to lift the $100,000 cap, then at that point, I will ask.
So you have to do it according to each year?
Right, I need requests each year, is what the office of control requests.
Why would they do that?
I believe that when we asked them, what was the most accurate way to track this information, they gave us this message.
The other thing I was wondering about is that when we're talking about the two categories, the budget advocates and also the Congress, does any of those funds assist in upcoming elections? Or is that one of the goals also? Can we say outreach?
No, the outreach is only for, typically for budget advocates in terms of citywide outreach. The outreach for Congress would be to the Neighborhood Councils themselves. They could start, if they went to multi-day, they could advertise to open it up to any community organization who is interested in learning the tools and techniques that they provide of how to effectively advocate on the day of the Congress. So it's not necessarily election-related outside of, in Congress, they will typically have a class on effective outreach techniques, particularly during elections.
The other thing, you know, I want to go back to the issue of the funds' role in, I can't understand why they started the accounts each year, they roll over each year. That seems inconsistent.
Controllers stated that they would like to, currently, the way we're tracking it right now, within the, is it being a count? We have to separate it by fiscal years, like what you see.
I understand it's separate accounts, that you have better, how we, budget is going to roll over automatically, and it seems inconsistent to say account zeros out and create a new one, just in order to what, to roll the money into a newer account?
No, the old money would stay in that existing account, and then any new money raised would go into the new account. We wouldn't transfer the funds back and forth.
But you then in essence could have three or four of these, and then you give a time?
That is correct. And so they would, as they spend down, they would spend down in older accounts.
Okay, that seems to be a burden on our Department to have a lot of resources to keep track of three or four of these accounts as opposed to rolling them over and keeping the running tally.
Yeah, but I believe Controller do not want to do that because of the possibility of mixing different fiscal year funds.
Okay, let me get some cards. Mr. Shaker, Mr. Speedo, Mr. Lyndon Grant, and Jay Handel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shaker, we're the Commissioners. At our last meeting, the letter that the Department had to present to this committee with regards to this matter was presented to us, and we did support it on a personal note. I think that this is very worthwhile because I've now found that as I go to different meetings, especially the Congress budget advocates, that I'm meeting new and young people who are getting notified of these events because these two groups have the ability to spend money and advertise for Neighborhood Councils. So both on a commission basis and on a personal basis, I can support this.
Hi, can I just speak? I am currently the co-chair of the workshop committee for the Congress, we plan appropriate far to start. Councilmen, just give me my reminder for dealing with the city. Why would they do that? Thank you. The words for everything. The Congress has been tremendously successful. We currently have, we get over 700 people out of 1,800 Neighborhood Councils and 400 ten, so that's more than a third of the population, and I think that's fabulous. We're doing workshops on all different kinds of things, and yes, elections will be on the program. Councils have been very generous in giving us money in order to operate, and most councils don't give 2,000, most give from 250, 500. 250 basically pays for their breakfast and lunch, which we give them. But we need the capacity to be able to keep growing, and we'd like to make this a two even better, but thank you.
Lyndon Grant, Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, I am also the liaison between Board of Commissioners and the Congress Planning Committee. I am on the Congress Planning Committee and have been for three years. One of the things that this does is it actually gives us the ability to be proactive for a change. We are now looking at the amount of people that we have growing every year and the fact that we do not exclude stakeholders and we allow stakeholders also, that we can be expanding over the next couple of years and even doubling our ability to train and outreach to Neighborhood Councils and stakeholders throughout the city. With that comes, this year's plans are already talking about having to expand in the South Lawn, having to expand and possibly shut down Spring Street because we need the ability to be able to reach out and train more people at a time. So I just want to give you that so you're thinking, so you're knowing that this is more, is very proactive in trying to expand that outreach, and we need the ability to do that. We may have to expand multiple days in the future, we may have to find another location also. So just letting you know that I support doing this, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Handel, speaking as the co-chair of the budget advocates. So for three years, I've co-chaired budget advocates, and for a time, what we've heard is, you know, a lot of stakeholders don't know what we do, and Neighborhood Councils don't hear from us. So by having availability of the funds finally, this year, we will hold six regional budget days sometime in March, that we will actually have what's happening in the City Hall area sent out to all of the areas. So we'll all be, everybody will be interactive and involved. We'll have audience responses so that we'll be able to get responses to the budget issues right there and then for immediate looking at. We will begin our first of two radio shows on March 1st on KRLA, and they are Neighborhood Council Budget Shows. They will be done on Saturday nights. Hopefully, that will be something moving forward in the future. And our budget days have been very, very successful. We pay, we pay for security in our buildings, we pay to have the room open up, we pay for IT, we pay for Channel 35. These are all the expenses that we have to incur within our city family in order for us to get our message out to everybody around the city. So we have a great outreach committee, we have a really solid 36 people on our committee this year, and I think you'll hear some really great things coming from the budget advocates in great part because we actually have the funding to do it now, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, is the ordinance that's in our book today, is this the ordinance that you're looking to approve to change to the two accounts?
No, this is not, this is just going to be a request.
Question.
Yeah, correct. You just said you're with the authority. There's no ordinance change here, or there's not a, there's not an issue linking an ordinance change. Which, which are you asking?
How do we transmit? Is it just ask Dunn to send a letter to the controller, or how do we do it? You have, what I have is a verdict on the checking accounts.
Which means the section we're going to give it?
It's dealing with checking accounts, one, 282792.
In the letter, there should be an attachment A, which provides some of the language that City Council would have to approve in order to open these two separate accounts.
So what I have is a test, is all the material on the checking accounts for Neighborhood Councils that we did several months ago.
So that might have been, there should be one attachment A on page four of the, of the letter dated February 11th to 2015. Do you have page four? It provides an update in this motion language, and it provides the details of the situation, and then at the end, it provides language, I therefore move that City Council authorizes the Office of the Controller to create an LA Congress Neighborhoods account, number 47L220, and a Neighborhood Council budget advocacy account, number 47L225, and fund number 44B, Department number 471. I can provide this to.
Do you all have it?
It should have been submitted on my, but obviously not.
So the letter you're talking about is merely direct.
Yeah, it was submitted, it was, we had a time, we were the clerk.
Yeah, at the time the agenda was posted, that was at the same time it was submitted.
Yeah, we did, we did have an issue because of the City Clerk's new electronic submission system. Even though we submitted, they did not, they didn't able to pick it up or receive it on their side, so I don't know if that was the ultimate result.
Do you know, they got, they saw on the copy, this is already just, it's yours, it's a two-sided copy, but here's the front page. The front page has a view of the renaming.
I'm just providing the clerk a copy, if you want to. On page four of that letter will be the motion language.
Let me just ask, in order to transmit this, what is being asked of us?
Just to make the motion.
Just make the motion as stated?
Yeah, making the motion as stated on the ordinance recommended attachment.
All right, so I'll, 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 maybe I'm going to support the letter from, that's dated February 11th to 2015, which is attachment A, which provides information establishing these separate accounts.
Thank you.
You're going to ask, this is a sidebar, up to controllers, if we can get a better understanding of why they're making you, you freedom to hold the accounts even though they've been rolled over so that you're working in the House, your personnel.
I will do that, thank you.
All right, so to prove that on item B, the letter and the attachment. Okay, next item.
Item number four is consideration on the application's name of Community View Heights. The application was approved for filing on August 14th, 2014, and primary applicant is.
Let me just ask, is it clear that all of the requirements that's included in that?
That would be a question for the City Clerk's office, who's got the whole process.
It's not highly true of all the requirements that's included in that.
Yes, sir.
Do we have cards?
Just a minute, please.
We have three people on, is that Mark Frank, Shandra Mosley, and David Cox.
Good afternoon, I'm the chair of our Board of Commissioners. My name is Mark Frank, Communication Officer for the View Heights Block Club. We'd like our application request to rename a section of High Park View Heights placed on the City Council's calendar for approval consideration. Our request was submitted to the City Clerk's Office on May 28th, 2014, at which time it was validated and found to be in total compliance with all policy requirements established within the City Council policy for naming or renaming the community adopted January 31st, 2006. As required, we established the boundaries, provided an map of the area, and obtained a petition that reflected signatures of 20% of the affected residents. The City Clerk's Office disseminated a letter notification dated August 29th, 2014 to the Planning Department, Bureau of Engineering, and the Department of Transportation with the deadline of October 31st, 2014. Two responded with their findings and with no opposition, although the Department of Neighborhood empowerment has given extended deadline of December 6th, 2014. Due to a, due to a delayed notification to date, we have not received a response or opposition from our community, from our Neighborhood Council.
I just need to clarify, I don't think, when you use the term renaming, does that actually indicate what you're asking us to do? Or is the name historical and uniformizing historical name?
We're actually asking, asking of Councilmen and Parks to rename because the name is currently High Park officially. And so historically, we've been referenced as View Heights for decades. So we're trying to rename it to View Heights in that official.
You're confusing me. Because what I understood is that historically, View Heights are not formally.
It's historically referred to as View Heights.
But not formally in city documents.
Absolutely.
But I'm also aware that in creating the Park Mesa Heights Neighborhood Council, the heights is referring to your neighborhood.
No.
What heights is that?
Park Mesa is referring to Park Mesa.
There was a, there was a, Park Mesa Heights Neighborhood Council. The heights in that term, they're called together several neighborhoods.
Correct.
But I understood the heights was referring to View Heights.
No, that's not right.
The heights, what heights was it referring?
I, well Ted Thomas would have it.
It's, it's, it's council, it's View Heights. What it did when the Neighborhood Council was formed, they formed three committees, High Park, Angeles Mesa, and View Heights. And View Heights, where we live at, is, was considered View Heights, but we'd never been able to have a sign that we needed from six boroughs. Yes, View Heights.
So say, you're not renaming, you're validating it to a foreign state, that's what I want you to clarify. Because there's a different process if you're renaming.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So it's always historically been called View Heights, but formally, it's never been given that designation. The community is called it.
Correct. Look, so all you're doing is renaming your current Neighborhood Council, you're not calling it.
No, no, we're not Neighborhood Council. The area that.
The area.
Yeah, the area, they, they historically, it's divided, Pritchell and the Bar, has been View Heights, it's been on the west side of Pritchell. High Park has been on the east side. And when they came together as Neighborhood Council, they created one Neighborhood Council with three communities, View Heights, Angeles Mesa, and High Park. View Heights realized that they have never formally been. View Heights realize that they have never formally been identified as a community, although they've called themselves View Heights for decades. So, they want to elevate the name of their community as a formal stat.
So, they're naming the community?
Well, they're naming, they're formalizing what's in the neighborhood. Is that, do I understand it?
Yes, what it, what it is, we want them really through the whole area, you know, because from where I'm listening, it's from Sixth Third to Slauson to West Little Bar to the, you know, to the county line. You know, when you're going up Fifth and Ninth Place, and you cross Butler. When you go halfway up that street, it's still View Heights. Then the county kick in before it gets over there. So, we just want to make, we don't have anything against it, but we just want all residents and View Heights be a part of it. We want the signs to express that.
That, that does accomplish, uh, Councilman Parks, uh, with Ted Thomas is speaking of, is he wants the name View Heights to go as far east as Preshaw. That does not fall in line with the, as far as our conversation previously, that does not fall in line with the description of the View Heights historically. View Heights historically refers to the hillings and scenic neighborhoods with bungalows, uh, Spanish-style homes. And what Ted Thomas, as the president of Park Mesa Neighborhood Council, his conversation with me is that they want to move as far east as, um, Preshaw and then go north, north of Slauson, and that has been our opposition, our composition with him since we started this process.
Well, I never did say, uh, you misunderstood, you're from West Little Bar because High Park is there. And I don't want to get into discussion with this because you got inscripted on, uh, you know, Sixth Third Street. Sixth Third Street is part of that area, from Sixth Third all the way down to West Little Bar. You have Fifty-Eight Place, you have Fifty-Ninth Street, you have Fifty-Ninth Place, and you have, you, you do the process right, and then you have Sixth Street, you got to go Sixth Street. You got to go Sixth First Street, you go Sixth Second Street, all of that is part, uh, View Heights. And when we're written up with the neighborhood council, that's how they're written up. Through, it's in the bylaws and everything, way the section was set up. I know this, they go to Preshaw, across Preshaw, but behind Park and Park and Mesa.
Your concern is that, you know, they can cover another area.
It don't cover the whole area up here.
What is the area called historically that you're saying should be added?
View Heights. And we send, and we send it in, we, we send it in to the, uh, city clerk, you know, the boundary, the map.
They have no records.
No, they don't have no map, but we have a map.
So, Councilman Parks, here, we've done extensive research, there is no historical record of View Heights ever. And so, the area that speaks to the historical description of View Heights is west of Albezo to Butler to the west, and, uh, it can go as far as Sixth Third Street. Once you pass Sixth Third Street, you're in Inglewood. Inglewood starts at Sixty-Fourth. We can't approach on that boundary at that point. So, we have no issues with going as south as Sixth Third Street if the neighbors want to, in that area, want to, uh, uh, go through the process. But the way, the policy that was adopted by the City Council to name and rename our community January 31st, 2006, it doesn't say, as Mr., uh, Thomas stated, that we get it wrong, we followed the policy explicitly. We did everything that was required of us as far as identifying the boundaries, coming up with the maps, and, uh, getting twenty percent of the resident stakeholders within those boundaries in order to, uh, submit it for approval with the City Council. And that's what we're asking to do now. We're opposed to going east of Albezo for obvious reasons, one which it does not fall in line with the historical description as mentioned, as it's been listed for decades as View Heights.
What about the area around Butler?
Butler is Windsor Hills and the signs are already placed.
Because part of Butler is hills in the city.
The, uh, Mid Street, Butler is, uh, going from, uh, east to west is the county. And it's Windsor Hills. Going from west, I mean, from east to, um, I'm sorry, going from west to east of Butler, Mid Street is quote-unquote High Park and is city.
Not High Park when you cross Slauson because that's where the county come in. And when Butler, when, when you pass into Forty, in the, uh, when you go over, Butler is Forty-four on the block, go halfway up, and that's still in the city. And it don't say whether it is there. You don't, you, you don't get complaints from the people from there because that would still be part of View Heights. And if you look at these, they probably knew when we came out in two oh three, that's what they considered when the first name of the council came out and was written in the bylaw. That's probably what they would say, that part of View Heights.
Okay, so you're saying that neighborhood council with regional bylaws?
Yes.
Have greater boundary than, but they are proposal?
Yes.
And where did those boundaries come from?
When, when the neighborhood council came into this.
What map, so what we?
When we have a, I have a map, yeah, we send it in to the, uh, city clerk.
Okay, so, you, they're obviously using two different sets of maps?
No, they're the same map. It's just, uh, the, the premise that, uh, Mr. Thomas is proposing is that we include their map that covers a large area. It even covers all the way to, I believe, uh, Arlington as far as the High Park area. We're just asking for the section that is descriptive under the historical reference of View Heights to be officially named View Heights. And based on the policy that County, City Council established, we follow that and there should not be a, uh, issue with approving that based on the procedures and policies required.
Did you guys use historical maps when you made the neighborhood council, your own maps?
Yeah, they used the map and, and printed out, even they.
Historical map?
Yes, and, uh, we used the map there, and that's how they divided the cities. If you look at, if you go down to Preshaw, you look at High Park, you look where Andy and Mesa start. Even at Seven Seven spinning up, they split up View Heights, they split up High Park, they split up Andy and Mesa starting at Seventh Street and go back east to Lanettes on the north side, on the west side of the street, and go up to Seventy-Six on, on the, uh, west side of the street. Then we go down to Slauson, you go to Slauson, you go past Butler, and then you go back, uh, south. So, it's a big, it's a big area. View Heights is a big area, just like High Park is from Lanettes to Preshaw. That's a little, uh, postponed too.
I'm so sorry, I have to leave. I showed the items for me, it started, um, two minutes ago. So, I have to, I have to leave. So, we're on the items for me, you'll be with us. Bye, bye, guys. Thank you very much.
The thing I'm confused with is that, you're saying from your proposal that you've used historical maps to come up with your. Why there's other maps that have a larger boundary exactly?
There's maps with different titles, and the title that Mr. Thomas is referring to is the title that covers the entire Park Mesa area, the Park Mesa Neighborhood Council area. And I'm familiar with that map, and it covers various communities, one of which is High Park. And so, again, all we're doing is asking for the portion of High Park, this currently named High Park that falls under the description of View Heights to be officially named View Heights, that's all we're asking for.
Are you using as your basis historical map?
No, there is no historical map. It's just the references that have been made through real estate and through, uh, LA Times newspaper articles that reference this area as, that is sister to View Park, Windsor Hills, and Aldeira as, um, as View Heights. That's the only reference we have. There is no historical map that I'm aware of. We got responses back from the Bureau of Engineering, and they identified that it's High Park. Uh, we got responses back from DOT, we received no responses from planning and none from, uh, Neighborhood, uh, Park Mesa Neighborhood Council until now. Other than the outside conversations we've had about wanting to extend it further east, which we are opposed to.
What, what is your opposition of a larger area?
The larger ever area that, again, does not fall in consistent with the description, that's, that's the primary reason. As far as the homes and the style of homes, the hillous, um, uh, uh, street ways and that sort. Uh, the other thing is that once you pass east of, um, Albezo, there's a change not only in the condition in which the community keeps up their neighborhood as to the styles of the houses, but as well the crime rate goes up. So, I think it would diminish our, what we're trying to do in our, our area in the mountains that we prescribed, uh, if we extend it further east. It takes away from the historical description, period.
But you know, one thing, I may have used the wrong term when I said historical map. You're using something as a reference that identifies boundaries that you're referencing.
Right.
What, what is that?
High Park.
No, no, no. What is the document? What is it that you're using that says historically these are the boundaries? What, what is the document?
I think we're using the term historically differently. To me, historically it's referencing the decades of the, the, uh, description of View Heights. To you and to the, uh, I think what, uh, Mr. Thomas is referring to is some other historical document that has already been researched, including through the City Clerk's Office. And there's no historical map or reference to View Heights.
But, but I think is that there's something you're referencing that gave you that?
No, we established our boundaries out from High Park. So, we live currently within the boundaries of High Park.
I know, but.
So, based on the policy, we pull out.
The policy says you have to have signatures from the larger community. I don't think the policy gives you the ability to say, here's the larger area, I'm just gonna take this segment. And, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. When you drew the boundaries, what were you referencing when you drew the boundaries?
The boundaries that reference the description of View Heights.
Okay, where did that, what is that reference?
Just, just a historical reference to it. There's no map or any, any document.
News articles, there are.
Correct, the news articles, it's in your package.
Description.
Correct.
Is there something that has those, uh, boundaries that are listed to show?
They don't state, Councilman, they don't state the specific boundaries. We did look for that, and they don't state that. That's why we included those items in your package that you submitted. Because there's no designated street name that is provided for us to cut off the boundaries other than the, the description itself.
My final question, I'm, I'm getting more confused, but my final question is that in dealing with this issue with no map or other references, then what drives your objection to the larger area that was incorporated into the neighborhood council called View Heights?
As I stated, it's the, the mere description of the area is what our objection is. Because once you go east of Albezo, the description of, uh, View Heights is no longer there.
I mean, what, what's, what, what is that description on? That's what I'm trying to get you to.
The description is on the articles that we provided for you. That's basically the description is, and after we bought into the neighborhood, Rollator says referred this area that we live in as View Heights, which is one of LA's best-known kept, uh, uh, kept secrets, uh, 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 in reference to or in comparison with other cities, the rest of Los Angeles.
And I have a point, just, just going east of Albezo is, is flat. And so, just in the name itself, View Heights, it's just inconsistent with even that name. You know, the idea of View Heights is that there's hillsides, you kind of some views, um, type of homes. If we start going too far east, it doesn't really make sense anymore with that, that name. We're in Park.
Okay, but if you go further east, what is it called?
I'm not sure what it's called, east.
It's, it's called High Park after you cross West Little Bar. You see the signs there and everything. But see, when we talk, you know, you say that, I said Preshaw. And I just didn't want to get into discussion, but I had talked to some of the, uh, the block hubs for Nissomis May State on the other side of the, and she just sent me an email and said that she owned the deed because she never was asked, and she's only here at Park. And the thing that you were talking about, they showed one, one prescription of that, and it was on Sixth Third Street. With it, when it said the historic, um, it was a one part. And I don't know if it was in Sixth Third Street or not. I'm just saying, if the whole community, you should take them, the whole community and like, when I looked at it, when you asked me, yeah, I support it if you take on the whole community, but I would think you can just cut off, isolate the spot and just say that would be View Heights. And, and as far as the crime statistic goes, all of it is safe and the crime statistic doesn't matter because I keep up with that, uh, every day too. I don't see where the crime activity goes. Let me try to separate the neighborhood. That's all I'm saying. If you want to let, uh, and first I would be saying, we, uh, we have the bylaws, we have the bounds and everything, it's in the, to the clerk's office and everything. And wrote the boundaries down and everything where it should be. Because you were talking about here, press, Chesley, and different places like that. If you look at View Park, View Park, View Park come all the way to Slauson. And where it's not gonna be like the real View Park, you're gonna say that way. View Park on like up there is in the hills too, but then you come down to Chesley, Hardco and all that. That's this View Park to right up to there is Slauson, where View Park is. But I'm just saying, I think you separate, take a little section out and say this is that. This would be View Park and where the rest of the area have already been established as View Heights. We never could have set it up, I guess, and the neighborhood council would never set it up as.